Good evening, everyone. It's March 5th, 2019, 6:30 PM. We'd like to begin our city council meeting. And with all of our city council meetings, we'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to do roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask our Vice Mayor, Pat Gabriel, if you'd take us through the considerations of changes to the agenda and setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Brian Schuster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda has been set. Now, we have one proclamation that I would like to read at this time. And this is the proclamation on the disability, Laramie Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas disability is no way diminish the right of individuals to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society. Whereas family members, friends, and members of the community can play a vital role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities, especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services, and public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings. Whereas the goals of this city include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities of support to make informed choices and decisions, live in homes and communities where they can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, have independent friendships and relationships with others, and achieve full inclusion in society. Whereas thousands in Wyoming face challenges with disabilities daily. Whereas the month of March has been designated as Disabilities Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize disabled individuals and promote awareness. Now therefore, I Joe Shumway, Mayor and President of the governing body of the City of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as Laramie Disabilities Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, religious and educational institutions to join in observing the month in honor of persons with disabilities. This has been signed by me, and I'd like at this time to call forward those that are going to be, we're going to take a picture. And also, I'd like to have Mark Sparks, if you'd come up and receive this, and then if you'd like, how do you say something to us? And after your comments, then we want to have Sam Burkett. And by the way, both Mark and Sam joined with many of the council members this week where we had a chance to see some of the obstacles that people with disabilities, especially those in wheelchairs, have trying to navigate the streets and sidewalks of Laramie. And it was a great experience, and it opened a lot of eyes. So anyway, thank you, Mark, for being here, and thank you for all that you've done for us this week, and the recognition of Disabilities Month in March.
Sure, absolutely. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Mark Sparks. I'm the Vice Chair of the Laramie Advisory Committee for, Laramie Commission for Disabilities. And first, I want to say thank you on behalf of the commission for this proclamation. Now, I know that this is an award for me, but the Oscars were last week, so I'm going to treat this like this is my honor right now. No, in all seriousness, the commission is very, very grateful for this proclamation. To us, this proclamation is more than just recognizing that Disability Awareness Month exists. To us, it's more than just of a tip of the hat to individuals with disabilities. For us, it's an acknowledgement by the city that they truly care about the challenges that individuals with disabilities face in our city. Like you were saying, Mayor Shumway, this year, we got to kick off Disability Awareness Month by hosting an event where we get to watch city council members try to go around downtown in wheelchairs, right? And though it was comical at times, you know, watching, you know, Councilman Weaver, you know, trying to speed across the street so he can go up a curb cut, or watching Councilwoman Stalder, you know, rush across the street trying to make the light, the challenge that individuals with disabilities faces is no laughing matter at all. I see it day in and day out in my life, the different challenges and obstacles that individuals have to face. And a lot of the time, it's things that we often take for granted in our own lives, as you guys were able to see during this event. So disability awareness, to me and to our commission, matters because it's not just a month where we say, hurrah, yeah, let's focus on disabilities. No, it's a month where we can really gain awareness and understand the different obstacles that individuals with disabilities face, and that we can come together as a community to be advocates for individuals with disabilities. I mentioned that word when I emailed the council members after we had that event, that we all have the opportunity to be advocates for individuals with disabilities. So Disability Awareness Month is figuring out in what aspect you can be a better advocate for individuals with disabilities. So thank you again for the proclamation on behalf of the commission. We're very, very happy about this, and we thank you for all that you guys do for our great city. So, thank you.
Could I have Joe Carroll, Rob, Sam Burkett, and Mark Sanchez and the others that are here for this to come forward? And Mark, I'm going to give you the proclamation, and then we're going to take a picture. So if the council could just come around here, we're going to try to get everybody in the picture.
Jordan, can you get everyone in the picture?
Jordan, can you get everyone in the picture?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. I truly enjoyed the other day.
Sam, thank you.
Yeah, anytime.
All right. All right. I'd like to ask the city clerk if she would, our next item is a public hearing, if you would give the notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that on the fifth day of February 2019, an application was received in the office of the city clerk for a new microbrewery liquor license, number M-8, for Bonds Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Bonds Brewing Company, at 411 South 2nd Street, Laramie, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this liquor, relative to this license application will be held Tuesday, March 5th, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 6:30 in Council Chambers.
Thank you. All right, this time, is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak for or in protest to this new license that we're considering, liquor license for Bonds Brewing Company LLC? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. City manager, are there any announcements today?
No announcements, Mayor.
Okay, no announcements, then we'll move on. Are there any disclosures by anyone on the city council regarding any issues or any of the items that we have on our agenda today? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to our Vice Mayor, Pat Gabriel, and we'll continue to do the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul Weaver. Roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so the consent agenda has been passed by unanimous vote. Now we go to the regular agenda, the first item, and the regular agenda is item number 10. Ask Paul Weaver if he'd introduce that to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that City Council approve the application for a new microbrewery liquor license, number M-8, to Bonds Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Bonds Brewing Company, 411 South 2nd Street, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term March 20th, 2019, through May 7th, 2019, and, tongue-tied, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Pat Gabriel. Any discussion? You have something? Yes, go ahead. Our city clerk is going to give us some information.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As stated on your cover sheet, we did receive this application on February 5th. Prior to this application, they have completed the TTB process that's required for a microbrewery. That is a certification at the federal level stating that they meet all of the required findings for federal microbrewery license and stuff. So at this point, now they come back to the local licensee, you know, or the licensing body, and ask for a microbrewery license. The state liquor division has reviewed the application and have no concerns regarding the application. They've received everything they needed. They have staff members that have completed tips training as required by our local code. Just to give you a little background information, we have Mallory and Jay Bond in our presence. They are the applicants, two of the applicants. They were born and raised in Wyoming, and both are graduates of the University of Wyoming. Part of why they opened the brewery, or would like to open the brewery here is Laramie seemed to be the perfect fit for a world-class microbrewery based on proximity, historic downtown, and population. They're excited to be involved in such a vibrant downtown and are looking forward to helping Laramie progress. They are here for comments if you have any questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Nancy. Let's, we'll invite them to come up if they want to, but let's start off with the city council. Any questions or comments in the council? Yes, Paul Weaver.
I have one question for the city clerk. Mr. Mayor, I wonder why the licensing term is so brief, March 20th, 2019, through May 7th, 2019?
Sure. That's a great question. So our licensing year is May 8th to May 7th of every year. Since they're requesting a license in this current year, we can only go from tomorrow through the end of this license term. So you will see a renewal application, May, or April 2nd, for a renewal of this application.
Well, I see, Mr. Mayor. It's just an issue of timing. All right.
Thank you. Good question. Anyone else have any questions, any comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Jane Pierce on the phone.
Good luck. Thank you.
Do we get samples?
All right, at this time, we'll ask the applicants, if you desire, you can come up and speak to the council.
I don't have to.
You don't have to, certainly voluntary, yes.
Mayor, I would like to point out that they will have a tasting room to serve their brew in.
At the...
At their location at 411.
After they get their license approved.
Right.
Okay, thank you. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Back to council. Any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call on the license, application for the license.
Schuster.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, item number 10 is passed unanimously. Good luck to you, and we'll look forward to new business in the downtown. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to item number 11, and I've asked Charles McKinney if he would introduce item number 11.
I see. I was reading, and I forgot what I was doing. I move to approve the original ordinance number 1994 in the first reading, amending Chapter 10 of the Laramie Municipal Code, deleting section 10.32.020 through 10.32.080, renumbering the remaining sections.
Second.
Is that everything on that, Charles?
Yeah, that's everything on the motion.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by Aaron O'Doherty. Any, is there, chief, is there anything that, okay, yes, if you'd kind of give us a summary of what we're considering.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just really briefly, the reason why we're bringing this up is this was established in before the 1980s, when Chief Stalder even started. So he was my only source of information back when this started. But back in the 1980s, when this began, to be in compliance with the law for bicycle registrations, you would have to bring your bicycle down to this building, City Hall. Somebody at the front desk would then call for a police officer, a police officer would come. We would do an inspection of the bike to make sure it had blinker, not blinkers, geez. Wrong vehicle. Reflectors, working brakes, and then we would issue a license for that, and we'd take a small fee. This was a pretty cumbersome process, and it involved a lot of people, as you could tell. Then in about 1993, this began to change a little bit. We started giving the licenses to the bike shops in town, and then they would perform this duty for us, licensing them, collecting the money. And that worked for a couple of years, and then that program just fell through. It's my understanding, in speaking with Chief Stalder, that bike shops, either we weren't providing the licenses for them as they needed, or bike shops were out of business, or they just discontinued the process. And so since about 1998, this ordinance has not been enforced by us. And so tonight, we're asking that we eliminate the licensing requirement in this ordinance and renumber those remaining sections of the ordinance, as it basically has no teeth. Officers today have a lot more opportunities to identify lost and stolen bicycles. NCIC, we have multiple internet programs, such as Leads Online, and also with use of Facebook and other social media. So it's really just, there's no need for it any longer.
Officer Terry, this is something that's becoming more and more common in communities throughout the United States. Is that correct?
It is. It's my understanding that most places, I do know that the university requires their students, when they bring a bicycle on campus, to register with them, but beyond that, it's, I don't know of any others.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Officer Terry? I would recommend that if a person wants to have recovery of their bicycle, should it be lost or stolen, to write down all the information that they need to keep it on their person, so that, you know, that's been one of the benefits of registering bicycles, but now that you can take that responsibility upon yourself. All right, seeing nothing from council, is there anything from the audience? We'd like to make comments on this new ordinance that we have to delete the requirement to register bicycles in the City of Laramie? All right, back to council, anything before we go to the vote? Seeing none, let's go ahead and roll call.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Jane.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Has left the conference.
Stalder.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so that is passed unanimously. And now this is a, this is a first reading for this, and so we will come back to the council on a second reading in our next city council meeting. Item number 12, and this is, I've asked Pat to introduce number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is amending original ordinance number 1995. I would move to approve original ordinance number 1995, amending Laramie Municipal Code, Chapter 12.52 through 12.52.010 through 12.52.060, to update and correctly reflect rules adopted by the Parks, Tree, and Rec Board, Advisory Board, as outlined in Laramie Municipal Code, Chapter 2.28 through 2.28.070D. That's on first reading, instead of public hearing for March 19th of this year.
Thank you, Pat. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian Schuster. And our Assistant City Manager, Todd Pizer, you want to introduce to us, or anything you want us to consider?
Honorable Mayor, through you to the city council. This is a culmination of the process that's handled by the Parks, Tree, and Rec Advisory Board. The Parks, Tree, and Rec Advisory Board, through code, adopts rules, and once those rules are adopted and ratified through minutes, they become a part of the Parks rules. We did that in November and December. Council approved those minutes in January, and now we've got to make code match to make these rules come into effect, beginning, I believe, May 31st, 2019. If I can direct your attention to the cover sheet, you can see what the existing sign looked like. It was, it had a statement about dogs, and then said all the things you can't do, which is like golfing, or bikes on paths, or alcohol without a permit. And then you can see what the proposed park signs are as they relate to the rules. Our trail rules are not actually adopted in code, and that's why there's a separate trail rule sign. The most glaring difference between the proposed park rule changes and the trail rules is that there's not a time limit on the trails for commuter purposes. If I direct you to the ordinance, and it talks about the changes, most of the changes are clarifications in verbiage and making the verbiage sound the same throughout. And one of the statements that becomes very apparent is "without advance written approval of the city manager or his or her designee." That was varying throughout the code, so we wanted to fix that. Some of the changes are also posed by Chief Stalder, and to change from "shall damage destroy," or "willfully," or "remove" any tree, plant, or species, to try to make the verbiage a little less intense, to make sure that we can cover everything without having everything listed out. The most important piece of the puzzle, and the most glaring change, is the fact that we had opted to choose park hours. If you look under 12.52.045, it has been changed from overnight sleeping in parks prohibited to park hours, and basically states park hours shall be between 5:00 AM and 12:00 AM. No person shall camp, sleep, or park in a camp trailer or motorhome in any city park or park facility between the hours of 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM without the advance written approval of the city manager and/or, or his or her designee, again, to make sure that language was consistent. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just for clarification, individuals can walk on the paths or sidewalks in parks, but they cannot camp, and so it's still, there is going to be a curfew or park hours, but it won't be enforced if they're moving around on the park sidewalks and paths that go throughout the city. Is that correct?
You know, Honorable Mayor, I believe our attorney, Bob Sutherland, had said, "It's a matter of how it gets enforced or what's enforced." There's lots of ordinances that are on the book. You know, if somebody's moving through for commuter purposes, or just going from neighborhood to neighborhood, I couldn't imagine that there'd be any problems. But far and wide, most of our vandalism occurs in these hours, and we'd rather eliminate people from, how would I say, congregating in the parks at those times.
All right. Is there any questions from anyone on the council regarding this? Brian Schuster?
We talked about it earlier, about the power-assist bicycles. Are they allowed or not allowed, then?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Schuster, is, I believe the power-assist bicycle should be allowed.
Okay, okay. Is that everything? Charles McKinney?
My first question, how many tickets are we writing a night? I mean, how many, how many instances, how many problems? Do we have any data on arrests, citations?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Schuster, or Counselor McKinney, I don't know, I don't have that number. I can certainly collect that data if you would like it. I don't know that the, that there would necessarily be, because a lot of our vandalism goes uncaught, and park crews mostly clean that up the next few weeks after it's been, after it has occurred.
And it doesn't happen during the daytime, at all?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Charles McKinney, or to Counselor McKinney, sorry, Counselor McKinney. Not to my knowledge, we've never, we haven't seen vandalism.
Citations, no arrests during the day?
I can, Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor McKinney, I can certainly look up that, get that information from the police department.
Is the curfew, you think, is going to change anything? Sorry, Your Honor.
That's all right. Just to remind you, you know, you have the, you'll be able to ask as many questions as you want, but let me recognize you each time.
Yes, I will.
Honorable Mayor, through, to Counselor McKinney. It's my belief that it will. This is standard, pretty much standard practice, and something that I'm bringing from previous, you know, 20 years in a previous community that we had good success with.
Your Honor.
Question? Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Are we going to put police enforcement in the park?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor McKinney, I don't believe that's the intent.
So...
Go ahead.
Do you, the neighboring people around the area, they're calling in for the instances that you're having a problem with? Or just the police officers passing by, or...
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor McKinney, I believe that would be the process for all of it, is we intend, the more eyes on a facility, the better off we are. We get more support when we have community involvement, and people watching the areas, so that we can get notice to the police department of what is happening, and they can respond to incidences. We have, on a few occasions, had the police department station themselves near the skate park, which has become somewhat of an issue with the shelter real close by, and they have dealt with some situations related to that. But we don't typically ask for the police department to station in the park system.
Is that all your questions? Another? Go ahead.
I can wait for the next time.
No, go ahead. Do you have another question?
I'm, I don't see where this is going to make a difference. Posting something and making it known that you're not allowed to be in the park from midnight to 5:00. But you, you have people that have, you had a wedding, they go home, they want to go for a walk in the park, and now they can't go for a walk in the park? I mean, I'm kind of confused as to, I get the vandalism, I understand that, I realize what you're trying to do, but I don't think putting that ordinance on there, or that posting that, is going to make a difference. I don't believe that...
That's okay.
I, I think it's just another way to say to the public, you can't be on the property. You can't utilize a property, doesn't matter how it got there. I set the rules and regulations, and I know we have problem children, and every community has those. I think that the officers, they do a great job. I think that they'll catch them, they'll do what they can to be able to take care of the problem, and I think this is kind of a waste of time. That's it.
I guess that's a comment. One thing, one thing I will say is that our police department is very responsive to complaints. So if there's a complaint, they move right in and deal with the problem. And we have, now with this, we have something that can be enforced, and that's something that we do. I don't, I think the comments from our Assistant City Manager is that we're not out looking to, you know, be, you know, overreaching, but we are going to be very careful to make sure that our parks are safe, and that they're maintained, and that we have the ability to enforce. So anyway, I guess that's a comment from me. Did you have any other questions you had?
I'll wait for comment.
Okay. Let's go to Aaron Doherty, and then we'll come back to you, Brian.
The way I read it, the 12.52.045, we're just taking a negative and making it into a positive. So instead of saying overnight sleeping is prohibited, it says here's the park hours. And to me, it gives an opportunity for the police to look into things that look suspicious. But people can still walk on the trails. I mean, that doesn't change.
But isn't the trail in the park?
Yeah.
Charles, okay, anything else, Aaron? Charles, okay, anything else, Aaron?
No.
Okay, thank you. Brian Harrington?
Yeah, my question is, what are we defining as a trail, which I think might get to Charles' point? Are the paths in Washington Park as an example, is that path considered a trail, or is that a path in a park?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Harrington, my definition of trails is that anything that's an, that's an enhanced sidewalk would consider itself as a trail. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Charles, back to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So back to my point. The trail that goes from the center from, in the bonnie, goes through the middle of the park from like over by Knight Street, cuts through the park and goes to, I could, doesn't it zigzag, or it goes, it cuts through some way, shape, or form, that's in the middle of the park, that's still a walkway and a path, but it's still inside the park. So you can be inside the park on the pathway between twelve and five, but you can't step on the grass.
Is that a question?
Yes. All right. Can you step on the grass?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor McKinney, if we're drawing up conclusions or statements, you know, honestly, you probably could. But this is a way to provide some enforceable action during times from midnight to five AM.
Charles McKinney?
Can you not enforce that during the middle of the day? Can the officer, can, he can come in and make anybody compliant inside because they are the police officer. They can write a citation, they can arrest somebody for doing vandalism or anything else during regular business hours. So then, why can't they do it in the evening without a curfew? Because they still can, can they not?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor McKinney, I don't know that that's, I believe that's true with the police department, but that's the best I can answer that question.
All right. Our City Attorney, Bob Sutherland.
Mayor, thank you, and Counselor McKinney. This is a tough one, because you see the point, the point you're making. And Assistant Chief could always weigh in, because you walk between, you walk in this line where you see somebody walking through the park, who cares, right? They cut through Washington Park to get over to their house, who cares? Two o'clock in the morning. If you see, and I'm going to, I'm going to be blunt, if you see somebody at two in the morning, standing under our flagpole with a Nazi flag.
I get that.
What else do you do? As it turns out, there's no, there's no law in standing around with a Nazi flag. But if you know that that person's going to run it up a flagpole, I think that the officers would like to have the discretion to go over and say either "we're citing you" or "move out." And on the second, to make it a less dramatic example, you see twenty people in a park at three in the morning, there's no drinking or anything, but, but there's something bad is going to happen. I think that this gives the police department a chance to go over and say, gentlemen, out you go, or you get cited. That's what I think. I'm not trying to put, I think that's rare, but I'm not trying to put words in the Assistant City Manager's mouth either. But I think that's what's going on here.
Charles, I'm going to come back to you. Let's go to Paul Weaver. You have a question?
I do. It's along the same line of questioning. Same section. I actually don't see any language in here, Mr. Mayor, that says people can't walk in the park between those hours, actually. It says you can't camp, sleep, or park a camper trailer or motorhome in the park between those hours without advance written approval. But I don't actually see language there that says you can't walk through or around. It's not specified. Lots of other things are specified about property destruction, vandalism, but it, it does not say that you can't walk. So I would assume that it wouldn't really authorize a city employee or police officer to stop somebody just because they were walking through. The ordinance doesn't say you can't do that.
Mr. Fieser?
So, Mr. Mayor, my question is, can we get some clarification on that, because that language isn't in the ordinance?
Right. We're, we're looking at park hours now instead of prohibition. So can you address his question on what the intent of this revision is to this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, if I can specifically to the point of walking around or through the park during these hours.
And if we need to, you can ask Assistant Chief or whatever, and we'll get to you, Charles.
Honorable Mayor, through you. I would actually defer it to Bob, that question about the adding in that it doesn't say you can't walk.
Well, I'll, I can take a look at that language. I'm not willing to amend it on the fly, once we figure out what the intent, what, what council wants the intent to be.
Not, not proposing an amendment necessarily, just looking at the existing language, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It doesn't say that you can't walk through the park.
And again, this is the first reading, so we'll have chances to review this and come up with language that seems to be clarifying, so. Did you want to respond to that before we go to Charles McKinney?
Honorable Mayor, through you.
Okay. Anything you want to say other than what you have? Okay. Anything else you had, Paul? Okay, Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Assistant City Chief, can I ask you a question?
Two o'clock in the morning, there's twenty people in the park. Do you have the right to go over there and ask them what they are doing?
You know, Honorable Mayor, Counselor McKinney, we do. I mean, we always have a thing called consensual contact. We could, if we see something, we can articulate that's, that's suspicious, we can go make contact, we can ask for identification. Just listening to, you know, what my partners are saying from Parks and Rec and Assistant City Manager, I think what he's trying to do is give the police some teeth within this ordinance that if, if they are doing something criminal, then we have the, the reason and the opportunity to contact them and remove them from the property, and possibly prevent the vandalism is, is what I'm getting from this. I, you know, I think he's correct when he's speaking about, you know, when vandalism occurs, it's probably not taking place in the middle of the ti, or middle of the day in broad daylight when other people are there. We are very much reactive in these cases, where, you know, in the morning, when grounds crew shows up to go to work, they find the vandalism, whether that's graffiti or what have you, and then we're responding, we're taking a call relatively with little information other than a possible date and time and what was done. So I don't know if that completely answered your question. If you have additional, I'm definitely going to try.
Charles, being an officer of law, you have the right to do, anything can be suspicious for you. You can go to anybody and you can ask them any question that you see fit that pertains to what they're doing there. When it's property, private property, when it's, you're, you're the police, you have that right to be able to walk up and say, hey, what are you doing? Because you, you deem it suspicious. You deem that there might be a problem. You deem it that they're, they're gathering together to do harm to someone or something, or a piece of property. You have that right to do that. You have the right to write a citation if you find something that was illegal going on. You have the right to arrest somebody if they're doing something illegal. Is that not correct? I mean, what is the, I don't understand why the five, the twelve to five is going to change anything from the normal, because you can do that during daytime hours, regardless of whether it's posted or not. Is that not correct?
Honorable Mayor, Counselor McKinney, it is true, we do have powers of arrest and powers to issue citations. However, if I can't articulate a reasonable suspicion, which is not as easy as you say, I mean, there has to be a reason for me to contact somebody. I can walk up to somebody and ask them if, if they would like to speak with me, but really, it's as easy for them to just say, I don't want to talk to you, and they keep walking. I have to end that contact with them. If there's an ordinance that says you're not supposed to be in this park from twelve AM to five AM, there's a violation of law there, and that gives us a little bit more power to say, no, now I need to see your ID, what are you doing here? And it gives us a little bit more power in that situation, but not every situation's going to be that cut and dry, if that makes sense.
No, I'll save it for a comment. I'm good.
Charles, with, with these hours, what they're saying is, this park is going to be, just like City Hall, we're open from seven o'clock until five o'clock. Once we close City Hall, we don't anticipate people coming into City Hall and using the facility. That's, that's no longer a place for them to assemble.
No, I get, I understand that. I get that.
All right. So your question?
My, my problem is, it, with this whole thing, just the, just that piece, that one simple piece is, hey, we got a couple of bad apples, and we're going to ruin it for everybody else in the city. We're going to take everybody's right to go into the green space that they have. And I get that bad things happen after midnight. I understand that. I get that. But we shouldn't take away the right for somebody to go walk through the park because they're having, they just got off of work. They want to go running. They're allowed to be on the path, but the path is in the park.
Right. We're going to, that's going to be clarifying language for us. So when we get to that, that's going to be very clear for us to deal with. Yes.
Sorry, Honorable Mayor, Counselor McKinney, I think one thing to remember, too, is even if this was enacted, you know, the officers always have discretion, and they always use common sense as well. So in the event that that is what's happening, and somebody's taking a hand-in-hand walk through the park at twelve oh five, and, and my officers get a call, they're going to respond, they're going to talk to them, and they're going to send them on their way. It's, it doesn't mean that there has to be a hundred percent enforcement, but discretion's going to play into every, everything that we do.
But even if it's not there, and somebody calls and said, hey, there's somebody in the park, and I believe that they shouldn't be in there, or they're doing something bad, you're still going to contact that person, right?
That is correct.
On complaint. Okay.
Yep, on complaint for sure.
I mean.
All right.
Makes no sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief, any other questions from the City Council? Yes, Jessica?
I have a different question. Section twelve fifty-two zero three zero about construction permits, no person shall construct or erect any buildings or structure of whatever kind, whether permanent or temporary, or run, or string any public service utility. Does that include those tightrope things that I see people doing all the time in the park? Or do they have to get a permit for that?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Stalder. What we're working on there, Counselor Stalder, is that, yes, that, that does include what is called slack lining, which is that, that term that you're doing. Slack lining is actually damaging to the trees, so that more falls under point five two dot zero one zero, which is damaging vegetation. As a side note to that, if everything goes through with the Albany County Rec Board grants, we're actually planning to install hopefully two slack lining locations in this community to encourage positive slack lining. Slack lining in itself is actually more detrimental to trees than hammocks. Simply the reason, because if you've ever seen people slackline, they bounce on the, on the ties, and what that does is that constricts the, the tie unit to the tree, and that can damage the cambria and cause problems. Girdling actually kill the tree, although trees store energy and they don't show up for multiple years. That will, and eventually come to the demise of the tree. But, so we're not necessarily in an approach to tackle, tackle hammocks, because hammocks typically, they aren't bouncing in and are causing that constriction. And there are other alternatives, that there's tree-safe connections, but most people don't purchase those. They just purchase their slack line, go out and ratchet strap it to a tree, and think they're good to go. But there are options around that that won't damage the trees that would allow you to do slack lining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this council? Okay, we're going to go to the public, and Spencer is here with us today with the Boy Scouts. He wanted to have a controversial subject to report on. I think we found one for him, so he'll have something to report on. Is there anyone in the audience?
Seemingly manufactured out of thin air.
We did this for you, Spencer. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make comments regarding this ordinance?
We have a person.
Sam, are you coming forward? Nancy, can you help bring the podium down for Sam? And Sam, after you've made your comment, would you be sure to sign your name on the thing so we can have a record of your comments?
Thank you.
This is Sam Burkett. Go ahead.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor Shumway and Councilmen. I just wanted to say that I'm opposed to this, too. I just think, like, putting a, a sign that says, like, no property in the area from noon, from midnight to five, I'm totally opposed to this. I just don't think it'd make any difference, Mr. Fieser. I just, I don't think it'd make much difference. And like, let's just say, if someone got off at work at like eleven fifty-five, or eleven forty-five, they want to go to the park, or like someone go through to the restaurant and go park afterwards, they have the right to do so, but they don't. But I do agree with the fact that, Mr. McKinney, that there shouldn't be any camping or, or RVs in the area, because our parks in this community, not just the park you're talking about, but all our parks in the community are protected for everyone. And I don't think anyone should be able to vandalize our beautiful city, regardless of what they have to do.
Thank you, Sam.
And we're working, me and Mr. Fieser and the Commission Disability right now, we're actually working to plan, putting a, together a, an accessible playground, which would put, take out a lot of property for the, for whichever park it goes in. I can't remember what they said, but we're, we're talking about it in our committee this week, on Thursday. But we're trying to promote an idea of one bill over billions of dollars to help get, to help not just people who are disabled, but for everyone to enjoy our beautiful city. And I just think this from the time from midnight to five, I think should be opposed, and I think everyone should have the freedom and the right to protect our beautiful city.
Thank you, Sam. Sam, speaking of the handicap accessible playground that we're working on. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to make comments regarding this ordinance? Okay, seeing, I, I want to start by saying, the intent of this is, we want to make sure that the city of Laramie, not only the, the city itself, but the parks and the downtown, wherever people are, they should go there feeling safe.
Right, right.
And so we're, we're, we're looking at that. We're trying to, you know, craft this so that we can not only have a safe community, but also one that has some enforceable rules for those people that may, you know, look at, you know, the time of the day is something where there may be some fear, and, and they want to have protection. So anyway, City Council, any comments now? We'll start with Paul Weaver, and then Brian Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll make it quick, because I, I think what we have emerging here is that, there's just the one section that seems to be problematic. I think in general, the council's supportive of the rest of the revisions, ordinance, changes. I think citizens in Laramie obviously aren't going to be supportive of anything that is less than a harsh penalty for vandalism and destruction in our parks. It's this issue of the hours. So this is the first reading of the changes. I think maybe we can take a look at that. We'll see if we can come up with some things. I was ready to vote for this without a second thought. This issue of the hours, I think, is worth exploring a little further. I think police officers always have that ability to exercise their judgment with that authority that we talked about, and that's, you know, it's appropriate. I would hate to see a simple matter of the clock create a pretext for somebody to be stopped just because they were walking through the park, or walking through the park with a paper bag or something, just because they happened to be there between those hours. I think that's what we're trying to address here. So hopefully, we can see some, Mr. Mayor, some more precise language with that that might make us all feel better. That's, that's where I think we're at. So by way of comment, that's what I would add. Thank you.
Brian?
We're on first reading. I, I am going to support this on first reading. Now, several people have had comments. I hope they contact Bob or Todd and say, these are my comments. Can we look at something, an amendment or something that will bring more people into a positive on this? And I think that's what we need to work for. As a little side note, like Sam talked, my daughter lives in Cheyenne. I think everybody that's talked about this handicap accessible park needs to go to their brand-new park that was open last year, and it's right next to the Menards, and it's phenomenally a fantastic park that's accessible to everyone. And people need to go visit that, because it's something we could look at and plan something off of that. Their climate's not that much different than ours. It would be used approximately the same amount of time. So just on that, but I, I think anybody that wants a revision. But I, I think anybody that wants a revision needs to put something into that, and I think we can work this out. And I hope it passes on first reading and doesn't go away, but I, I will support it on first reading, and then look at any amendments that are gonna come up on second.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on council? Charles McKinney?
I don't have any problem with any of the reading in the language except for the 12 to 5. That's the only problem I got. Remove that, and I'll go forward with it, and I'll be glad to support the rest of it.
All right. Anyone else?
Brian almost looks like he has. He's rolling his peg. Mr. Burns.
Yeah, that's right, you caught me at it, Mr. Burns.
Sorry.
No, it's fidgeting, you're right.
We, we still have two more readings of this, I think it would be important for us to come up with, with, you know, obviously, this is something that is, when you say 12 to 5, that may be one of the issues. If we could just come up with something that we think would be beneficial, to make this an, an ordinance that we can all feel comfortable with, would you please be sure to give that, you know, those ideas to us either here, or else put those together so that when, when we have the the second reading of this, we have those things that we can add as amendments or as, you know, changing of the language for this. So, be prepared to come back, should this pass to the first reading for us to come back to make the changes that would be important for us to deal with this further. Okay, one more, one more chance, anything else, anyone wants to comment on this, Charles?
I just want to say, I think that the police have the right to be able to do whatever they want to do, when they want to do it, because they deem it necessary. Doesn't matter whether it's 2:00 in the morning, doesn't matter whether it's 2:00 in the afternoon, or it's 8:00 AM in the morning and everybody's going to work. By putting this up, I don't believe that it's gonna make more people call in, I don't believe that it's gonna get them there faster. I don't believe that it's going to change anything except make it more difficult for people that go run. It's gonna make it more difficult for somebody that does work the midnight shift and decides that it's warm enough out, they're gonna go have lunch in the park. It's green space, belongs to the city, the citizen should be allowed to be in it 24 hours a day.
Okay, good comment. All right. Let's go to roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Pierce.
Weaver.
No.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Okay, that passes.
Has left the conference.
That passes with a majority of 7 to 2. So, we now move on to public comments. Is there anyone on the public that would like to make comments on any item that has not been, or has been mentioned in the agenda today? Any public comments from anyone today? Okay, seeing none, we'll now, Sam, come, come forward.
Pierce. Has joined the conference.
Hello again. I just wanted to say there was a great opportunity on Friday that we braved out the cold, and we got the stuff in before the snowstorm to go around town and go downtown and try out different wheelchairs. I know, Aaron, you were kind of scared there for a minute. And just wanted to say there was a, it was a great, great event, great awareness for the community. While, as Mark said earlier, we cannot fix everything in town. It, just the city does not have any money for it. And, but, what we can do is, we can all be advocates for a disability community. And I just wanted to say thank you all again for making this event a successful one. And I think we should do this against, soon with other people, so that they can experience what, what life is like for someone who's in a wheelchair, or crutches, or using walkers. And, and if just, if there's, if you see anyone who needs help, don't be afraid. Don't be afraid to help them. There's a lot of people out there who have help every day. And during the government shutdown last month, I, which should not have happened, I've noticed that the city gave a lot of help for those furloughed employees. For, like, going downtown, and it was like the Econo Lodge giving away free fruits for furloughed employees. I just think, just thankful that Laramie's a caring community, and that hopefully, that we continue to be a caring community for everyone.
Thank you for those comments, Sam. Yes.
Mayor, I would just like to point out that during our excursion on Friday afternoon, that it was very ni, I mean, it was a little bit cold, but we didn't have any snow, no rain to deal with, and it was very difficult for us as individuals to maneuver. But you have to consider, there was no snow, and then, when you look at all that adversity that people can, can face, when it does get bad, it's, it really brings it home how difficult it can be.
I should have done it in the snow. I would have been harder on you guys.
Yep, exactly.
It would have been a hell of a lot harder on me.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? One, one thing I will say, it's public comment time, but I'll say this because Vice Mayor said it's okay. We are ADA compliant. Everywhere we went, there were curb cuts, it was, we were, you know, doing what we can to make sure that we met the requirements of the Abortion Disabilities Association, and even with that, it's still an obstacle. And it's still something that, you know, we need to be aware of. So, as Sam said, let's help each other. Let's look for those people that we can help and, and make this a great community. All right, so we're gonna, that's the end of the public comments. Now, we're gonna move on to considerations of future council work session topics. Let's start, Jane, do you have anything for future work sessions topics for the City Council?
Not, not this evening, I'm just reviewing the list and it looks pretty good.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Aaron? Let's just go around, anyone that has any future, anything, Paul?
Mr. Mayor, one question I have about work session topics is, we said that we'd take a look at our work session topics, including those that were holdovers from the previous council, that we thought were still worth bringing forward into this council. And at some point, I think we should probably look and see if we're gonna still let those that received enough support get on that list, or if we need to take another look at it. Looks like the City Manager is thinking that they are.
They stay on there until we remove them, so.
We did a survey and, yeah.
I apologize, I was making that face because I didn't listen closely enough to the first part of your conver, of your question.
Mr. Mayor, for the City Manager.
Yeah.
We had a list that circulated through the council through email.
Correct.
Do you think these should still be our work session topics? And I don't know how many council members responded, but I think quite a few of us did and said, "Yeah, I think most of these probably still need to be on there." And the last time, I think, work session topics came up, we said, "Okay, let's sit on those, we'll have the retreat, and we'll come back and revisit that list and see if we still want those to be on there." And I guess I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, they're still on there unless we've removed them, is what the mayor tells me. Okay.
That is correct, we did discuss post-retreat and goal adoption revisiting the list.
All right.
So if you would like to do that, I could circulate something similar to what we did in January, or-
Well, maybe, Mr. Mayor.
If you could just let us know which ones were removed, then we'd be able to re, review those.
Right, and, and I can tell you, you know, funny, I was just looking at this, because I was thinking, how are we gonna knock these off? But I, I appreciate the reminder, because I forgot that you had wanted to revisit them after goal setting.
At least some of them.
So we left them all on the list, Mayor, nothing was removed. And that was based on the input from the council about what they wanted to do at that time.
Okay, well, okay. Answer that question?
Yep, sure did.
Brian? No, I'm good for now. Brian and I, Jessica, Charles? Anything, okay. So, I guess that takes us to item number 15, Charles, you're up again.
Ready? I move adjourn to executive session regarding conventional information on the state statute 16-4, or 405, Paragraph A, Roman numeral nine.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second, we adjourn. This is a voice, or is this a roll call?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All those in favor of adjourning to executive session indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one person, go ahead. The results, as I hear it, is there's eight in favor of adjournment, one that's opposed to adjournment, so we will adjourn.